Good morning and welcome to the Calversa County July 30, 2019 Special Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin by going into closed session. Madam Clerk.
Item one pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1: Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Donald Otten v. County of Calaveras, case number ADJ9561858 and ADJ10139270.
Chair, I'm asking that this item be polled, that today is not the day that we need to poll the item and it will be before the Board on the 13th.
Is there any objection from the Board members in form of this item? Okay.
Thank you.
Item two: Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation/Initiation of Litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4.
Any public comment on this item? Seeing none.
Item three: Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation/Significant Exposure to Litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2.
Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will move to closed session. We will return for 9:30 start of the meeting.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning and welcome back to the July 30, 2019 Special Meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. If you are able, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, we came out of closed session. That session is still open. We will report out when we close the closed session item. We'll move on to announcements. Are there announcements from, I'm sorry, please report out.
Item one on the closed session agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1: Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Donald Otten v. County of Calaveras, case number ADJ9561858 and ADJ10139270. The item was polled and moved to the August 13 meeting. Item two: Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation/Initiation of Litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. There was no reportable action taken. And item three: Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation/Significant Exposure to Litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. The item remains open.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to announcements.
Announcements. This is a time for Board members and county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Notes from the Board, announcements from staff? Seeing none, move on to public comment.
Public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. Just to be clear, this is for items that are not on today's agenda and general plan is pretty broad. So, first speaker. Bill?
Bill McManus. I know that once we get some of these other actions out of the way, the Board is in a hurry to move forward on another item, and I think you might want to stop and give a little bit of pause and think about it. A couple weeks ago, the Bureau of Cannabis Affairs or whatever it is issued a report of the audit that was done. It was reported on KCRA and resulted in another investigation by KFBK 1530 in Sacramento. Before you is a transcript of that television show or news report, and I haven't got time to read it all to you, but there are some highlights and some lowlights. First of all, this is from the cannabis audit itself, and it's the agency overseeing California's legal marijuana market has been, anyway, by the job and is struggling to hire sufficient staff to set an overall strategy for the nation's largest cannabis economy. The state is now saying, "We can't do this," and I'm wondering why this Board thinks you can, when you have nothing but an abysmal track record with regulation before. But in any case, just some highlights, I didn't mark them for you, but about two-thirds of the 219 staff positions authorized for the Bureau of Cannabis Control remain unfilled, according to an audit by the State Finance Department. A shortage of staff in the enforcement unit is hindering the agency's ability to conduct investigations. Sounds familiar. A little bit further on, in a lengthy response, Department of Consumer Affairs, which oversees the Cannabis Bureau, said the agency faced a rigid deadline to adopt regulations and begin licensing in 2018. Regulators hit that target, but the agency acknowledged that it faced a maze of shifting legislation and related requirements, including hiring staff, conducting studies, finding office space, entering into contracts for basic equipment and services, and designing an online system and reviewing license applications. They have quite a task in front of them, and they are failing at it by their own admission. A little bit further, among other findings, even with the thriving illegal market in California, only 15 enforcement unit staff positions have been filled, although 68 were authorized. This is for the whole state. The Bureau's ability to process complaints, perform inspections and investigations and review and testing, is impacted. Sound familiar? And there's a local cash shortage. The primary source of the revenue was supposed to be about $200 million. As of June, they've collected $2 million. So, it's not the financial windfall. There is no enforcement. What else do you need to know? Are you still going to go down this path and think, "You can do it better than the state"? You're not going to make any money, and you're not going to be able to enforce it, so come up with a bunch of regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thanks.
Good morning, Supervisors and staff. Thank you for allowing me to come before you today. My name is Melinda Hoff. I'm the President with the Calaveras County Association of Realtors. The Association has recently employed a Government Affairs Director, and I feel that it is important to introduce him here today. One of the goals of our Association in having a Government Affairs Director is to develop a closer relationship with local elected officials and county staff, attend meetings, and speak on behalf of the Association on realtor and property owner issues affecting property rights in Calaveras County. Our Government Affairs Director is a longtime resident of Calaveras County, real estate broker, and a dedicated volunteer. I'd like to introduce Mr. Tim Mutertis.
Terry?
Good morning, Terry McBride, District 2. I'm curious of an update of the PG&E money that the county got, and wondering why our little fire district hasn't seen a dime, who is now borrowing a truck from Murphy's Fire Department. Reminding you that the reason this county got all that money was because of District 2, that doesn't have any good fire equipment, has to borrow a truck. What is that all about? It's shameful. I was up in Sacramento on Bill 1054 because I'm tired of seeing what's been going on to us in District 2 and how PG&E has snubbed its nose at us in more ways than one because they're a soulless corporation. I talked to folks from Santa Rosa and the Paradise Fires. We all agree none of them are normal. And the folks in Santa Rosa did tell me that their county went out of its way to make rebuilding easier and faster. Our county didn't. How many people have left? And I get to thinking, how big is Jack's district going to be after the next census? It's going to be pretty wide because we've lost so many people from District 2 that stands now. Currently, though, my greatest concern is what is happening to make sure that that money is put into the hands that we all agreed to, to help make sure what happened in District 2 does not happen again. And where is it and why is it in the fire department hands and the other hands that need it so that they can make the improvements that we all agreed to months and months ago? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corder?
Every Tuesday, there's been a gentleman out there in the gazebo area, and I've talked to him a couple of times, just being friendly, and he's not out there today. It's Tuesday, and he comes Tuesdays, he says, because they take the property from people that can't afford to pay their fees, taxes, whatever, and he's there to get that information, I don't know, maybe even buy some property. I didn't get into that with him. But in the meantime, I come into the meetings, and there's this noise that comes. It's a very sharp noise, like when equipment is clashing. And so, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what is that noise? Why do we have that noise? And is somebody listening to what the Board of Supervisors are saying? Are people out here saying things to each other, saying things when you guys are in closed session back there? And of course, that was on the agenda most of the time when you were doing closed session in that you were doing it about the wages that the county employees get. And so, I object to that noise. I don't think that we should hear that noise. And if we hear it, somebody needs to find out what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public speakers on non-general plan items? Ms. Montgomery, are you ready to speak?
Hi, Alice Montgomery, District 3. I wanted to talk to you about SEQA and the EIR, and it's on commercial marijuana, not on the general plan. And so, I wanted to talk to you about the temporary exemption that finished on July 1st. July 1st, we, up until July 1st, anybody who applied for any kind of license in California regarding commercial marijuana, they had a temporary exemption. The problem with that temporary exemption is July 1st, and now they could very well be, well, they are required, to go through a SEQA review, which means each and every person that wants to have any kind of commercial marijuana license could be subject to going through an entire, their own little EIR. Well, little EIR, as you know, is not little. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for listening today, and whatever you do with this information is just up to you, but it's very important that anybody who's interested in this understands what these requirements involve. For any kind of consideration of new regulation, we really can't use anything that happened before the urgency ordinance. We can't use the conditions that were around during the urgency ordinance. We can't use the conditions that were after because they don't make the benchmarks, they don't make the thresholds. Some people say you can tier it. We can't tier it. So, if information is being given to Peter that we can tier it, that would be incorrect. This requires an entire new EIR. Start it all over again, and that's the cost. That's what needs to be done. If it's, don't, don't listen to me. Call the Office of Planning and Government Research. They will verify this. I talked to the head of it. So, it's, it's just a lot. None of this is a surprise. None of it's a surprise. 15 years ago, when they started asking commercial tobacco to put warnings on their labels, they were saying marijuana. None of this is a surprise, unless you're Mike Tyson and want to make a commercial marijuana resort, you're Jim Belushi, you're in the entertainment industry, you're Joe Montana, you're sports, or you're a venture capitalist. The small growers are not going to make money on this anyway, they know. The regulations weren't written for them. They weren't thought about for them 15 years ago. So, from a 30,000-foot view, as Supervisors, I think you will see that, you know, you can go ahead and try to make regulations. Will you be doing them any favors? No. No. And we do still have to comply with EIR. And no, there's no enforcement arm. It's just people suing, and they should sue. They should sue. I believe they should sue if we go forward and don't do this correctly. And no one else is going to help us, but I thank you for your time. You all put a lot of time into this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no further public comment, we will close that and move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, Chair, Members of the Board. Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management. I am asking to remove item number four at this time to bring back to the Board at a later date.
Any objection? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item is polled. We'll move on to the regular agenda.
Item number five is from the Planning Department. To conduct a public hearing, deliberate, and make a tentative decision regarding certifying the environmental impact report and adopting the Calaveras County General Plan, to defer action on a final decision and direct staff to prepare appropriate findings and a resolution consistent with the tentative decision to be brought back at a subsequent meeting for final approval.
Thank you very much. I'm going to take my privilege and open this. We will be opening a hearing here in a second, but I sort of wanted to lay out, in discussing with Director Maurer and County Counsel, how we'll go about conducting these next couple days. So, everybody bear with me, I actually took the time to write this down. But I want to start off all my comments by thanking the county staff, particularly the planning staff and Mr. Maurer, the Planning Commission, innumerable citizens, and years of work to bring this forward. This has been a work a long time in the making, and a lot of people put incredible amount of effort, weekends, nights, to make this happen and to finally bring this thing to a close, and I want to thank everybody sincerely. As everybody here knows, since you're here for the general plan, it's been 23 years since we've had an update. There's been many twists and turns, but today or tomorrow or certainly very soon, I hope to get this done. I think everybody here will agree that the current general plan is in bad shape, and as such, we have to complete this update. A delay in order to reach total perfection on this document will mean that we're going to continue to work under the existing general plan. Is my hope that this fact alone will drive us to reach consensus and move forward. My objections, my objectives as Chair for today and tomorrow are to, one, make any additional changes and additions needed for the general plan, and, two, to complete this process and bring this hearing to a close. Everyone needs to remember that the general plan can be adopted, can be, once adopted, can be revised many times during a year. This is a living document and must be revised constantly. So, if you do not get what you want in this round, I encourage you to petition the county to go and make amendments in the future. This is, as I said, this is a living document. It's also not the elixir to all the issues facing our county. We don't pass this thing and suddenly fireworks and flowers start falling from the sky. This is a working document, and this is a status of where we are and a prediction of where we want to go. It's going to take continuous work. So, as far as process for today, we are going to take on each element. There are nine elements excluding the introduction that we're going to take on. We're going to start each element by Mr. Maurer, giving us the introduction to it, talking us through it a little bit. Next, the Board of Supervisors are going to have a discussion. We're going to state the issues that each of us may have with a brief summary of why. We're going to try to keep that brief, but we wanted the public to know where our thinking was so you guys can direct your public comments to, to work with us, not just speaking into a void. Then we're going to move to public comment for each of these elements, and everybody's going to get three minutes. So, if you think you're getting cut off, if you add it all up, you'll have almost a half hour to stand up there and direct. I would please ask you to be, to maybe not use the entire half hour available, but be specific to what your issues are. But I don't think anybody's going to argue with that much time. Then we're going to bring it back to the Board of Supervisors. We're going to discuss each item, or adjustment suggested by the Board of Supervisors meeting. However, we are going to try to avoid heading down rabbit holes, and we're going to poll to make sure that people want to go there, so that we do not have any one of us chewing up more time on a project that may not happen. Then we're going to, if, if, if in the course of this we run into any issues that we feel are putting us in legal jeopardy or may jeopardize the county, we will move into, we will recess into closed session. That session is still open where we'll discuss what our risks are. I am going to run this meeting till 12 o'clock today, and then we are going to take a break till 1:30. We'll run again till 5:00. If I feel like another half hour is going to get the deal done, that's best I added a joke, everybody, but if I think we could do that, we will push through to the end. We will return tomorrow where we will work, where we will begin the meeting, do we say 9 o'clock or 8 o'clock, Madam Clerk? 9 o'clock, we'll begin the meeting, run the same calendar. However, instead of having a hard stop at 5:00, we will run until either we get it done or this Board declares no moss and throws in the towel. So, and then we will retry, then we have another date in August. So, I hope I've been clear. I hope everybody understands sort of what the process is. There's a lot of opportunity for input. I see this as a, very much a workday. So, with no further ado, everybody good on the Board with the plan?
Yes.
Okay. So, Peter, open us up and let's get this thing going.
Thank you, Chair Garmendy, Members of the Board, Members of the public. Wow, we're finally here. It's been a long, long haul for me and my predecessors. It started long before I came on board. It's been now five and a half years that I've worked on it, and it's really exciting to be at this, at this juncture, finally. I appreciate what you had to say, Jack, about the fact that this is a working document, and I really want to emphasize that fact, that the worst thing we could do is adopt this and put it on the shelf for the next 20 years and say, "We're good." I fully intend to come back on a regular basis to the Board with reports on how we're doing, how changes in circumstances and demographics and population growth, you know, affect the county. This should be like a business plan. You say, "This is where we think we want to go. This is the direction that we're headed." And, you know, if it's working, good, let's stay the course. If it's not, let's make a fix. Let's tweak it a little bit here and there. And so, what we're basing this plan on is what we know today and what we project for the future to the best of our knowledge. You've seen over the past, the growth projections have changed. We'll get into that a little bit more as we start talking about the land use and the different alternatives in the EIR. But when I started this project, the growth projections for the county were in the range of 10,000 to 12,000 people over the next 20 years. Recently, the Department of Finance has come in with new projections. We're now down to about 3,000 people. And so, things change. Five years from now, we may see a population boom, a, you know, a growth change that says, "Hey, we need to, we need to adjust this plan." So, this is based on the best knowledge that we have today and what we think is best for our county. There's a lot to like in this plan, and as been pointed out in the letters to the Board members, there's a lot of people that dislike parts of this plan. I would hope that as a planning document, planning being the art of compromise when it comes to land use issues, that we can look at the positive things in this and not just focus on those portions of the plan that one party or another dislikes. I think that if you look at the overall plan, it has a lot of positive direction for the county. There are things that people don't necessarily like. I guess the fact that all components of the political spectrum here has something they don't like about it means we've had to compromise along the way. So, with that general overview, the plan communicated has nine elements. There's also an introductory chapter, a glossary, and a bibliography. Most of this is mandated by the state. We have some additional components that we've added, and primarily that's the resource production element. We are a resource county. We have timber, we have agriculture, we have mining, and that's an important component of our economy and our character of this county. And so, we have added that as a, as an additional element to the plan. What's not before you today is the housing element. That is on a separate track. The Planning Commission reviewed that last week, and that will be coming forward in the near future. The state mandates that that be updated on, on a cycle. We're currently on our sixth cycle of that, and so that will be coming separately. That element was analyzed on both the current general plan that was adopted in 1996 and amended since then, as well as looking at this plan and the prospect of it being adopted at about the same time. But I don't want to get too sidetracked on the housing element. I just want to let you know that that's not a part of today's action, but it will fit hand and glove with this once adopted. The other component of action on, on this item is the certification of the EIR. Back in 2016, the Planning Commission had just completed 15 months' worth of hearings on a draft, forwarded a, their recommendation to the Board. Then, the Board said, "Yes, this is the right direction we want to go." This is what we call the project description, and, and that's what the analysis for the EIR was based on. Went through the normal EIR process, opportunities for the public to weigh in on what issue should be addressed, a lengthy analysis by our consultants, and I will take this moment to introduce those who are sitting next to me, which I forgot to do initially. At the end is Rod Stinson. He is, represents Rainey &amp; Associates, the lead consultant on the EIR. And next to me is Chris Stiles from our outside counsel, Raimi Moose in Manley. They have been instrumental in this process, and we really have relied on them quite a bit. And so, if there are any specific questions that you might have on the EIR itself, Rod is here to help me, and Chris is to keep me in line so I don't get sidetracked on legal We then had a public comment period last, last year. Once the draft EIR came out, we received a lot of comment on that. And so, the past year has been spent responding to those comments as were required and identifying additional measures that we can to reduce the environmental impacts, and so the final EIR came out earlier this year. So, that, at the end of this process, you will be asked to certify the EIR as well as adopt the general plan. The EIR is an informational document. The idea is that it informs the public, informs the decision-makers, informs staff. It's what are the effects of any project, this project being the general plan itself. This is a programmatic EIR because we don't know exactly what's going to happen. We've identified We've identified areas where development is appropriate. We've looked at a range of development types, what could the impacts be on a variety of resources at a programmatic level. Subsequent projects that come in, we'll be looking at the more detailed issues. But this looks at the broad scope of how does it impact the county. It identifies mitigation measures that can be adopted. It doesn't dictate that those have to be adopted. But what we need to do is weigh those proposed measures against the policy directives of the county. What is it we are trying to accomplish here? And it's a balancing act. We're looking at economic development. We're looking at providing housing for anyone, the full range of income levels for the county. We are looking at protecting the environment. We are looking at, you know, the aesthetic beauty that makes living in Calaveras County such a positive thing to do. And so all of those things need to be balanced, the human resources, the natural resources, and the economic resources of the county. And I hope that we've accomplished that through this plan. The plan is set up with goals, policies, and implementation measures. The goals are the very broad ideals of what we're trying to accomplish. What are we looking at? What do we want the county to be like five, 10, 20 years from now? The policies are the sort of the specific statements of how we're going to try to attain those goals. And the implementation measures are the actions that we will be taking to implement those policies so that we can ultimately reach that goal. There is a lot of implementation measures, a long laundry list of things that we will be doing in the future. We can't do them all at once. We will be, I'll be coming back as soon as this is done with my recommended priorities, but it will be your decision of what are the best, what are the priorities we need to do, given the time constraints, staffing constraints, budget constraints, and the overall desires of the needs of the county. Also, within the constraints of state law, there's a lot of things that are dictated by state law that we have very limited ability to override or to ignore. And so all of that is also contained in this plan. With that, I guess I'd like to get right into the introduction. I think that would be the first item, we begin with the specifics.
Sure.
I will hopefully bring that up in a moment, as the projector warms up. So the introduction provides a vision statement, a statement of guiding principles. It talks a little bit about the growth projections and a little bit of just sort of the history and description of the county. The Planning Commission modified this somewhat by, one, updating the information that we had in 2016 when this was first distributed for public comment, two, that will disappear in a moment. I want to make sure of that. Thanks, Rod. And I just have this up. If we want to go to a specific section, we can scroll to that, that section, so the public can see the text. The Commission added a section, Guidelines for Using the Plan, which we all agreed was very helpful. It talks about how, you know, how it applies to residents, to businesses, to developers, and to the county staff itself. We are compelled in many cases to make a finding of consistency with the general plan when we take various actions. If the board is approving a capital improvement program, for example, that needs to be consistent with the general plan. If the planning department is reviewing and taking to a public hearing a project for approval, we need to make findings of consistency with the general plan. So this first introduction section just talks about some of the very general issues associated with the county. The vision statement is on page one, and we'll go to that. We have some guiding principles that the Planning Commission had worked on and then was brought to the board, I think that was in 2015. So this is sort of the overall approach that the county is trying to take in adopting this plan. With that, I will turn it back over to the board if there's any specific concerns about this section.
Does anybody have any issues or concerns that they want to bring up on the introduction section? Supervisor Mills?
Yes, on INT 7, Goals and Policies, at the very bottom. The statement there is unless the policy identifies another entity such as an applicant of the policy language, it'll be assumed to read "the county shall." As we know, in legal terms, "may" and "shall" are the two key words to be used. Why have we decided to use the word "shall" here and literally close the door? Or maybe that's a discussion for the board to decide.
Let's, I guess that's a question.
That's a question.
I think the intent is that it is to be directive to the county. "We shall do this. We will do this." Otherwise, you know, the county may do this, and we may not. There's not much directive in that kind of language. And so the intent here is that "shall" is the operative word.
Supervisor Mills, other question?
Well, I'm just a little concerned that that might push us into a future corner, is all. So.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can we please put in the relevant section?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Ma'am, that's, let me, let me take a break real quick. So a lot of you haven't been in one of these rooms with me chairing. This is how we're going to run things. There is no comments from the crowd or objections to points of order that could come up. And so we will try to do the best we can with the tools that we have. When we get to public comment, I'm going to expect everybody to be respectful of each other. I have no tolerance for anybody from the crowd sniping at somebody who's up here talking. I would ask the people who are up here talking to address the board and not their fellow audience members. I'm sorry, I run a pretty tight ship on that, and it's just a product of the experience that I've had serving on this board. So ma'am, I'm sorry, but we're not going to stop the meeting for points of order from the crowd.
Chair, would you just prefer a broad overstatement?
I think, you know, if there's something further you want to talk about, then what we'll do is after we have public comment, we can come back and we can make your case if you want to change the made a "shall."
I agree. I think that would be, yeah, I think that's the best approach.
Supervisor Stopper?
Well, in that case, I mean, there are a couple of things I'd like to bring up, but I would defer to a public comment first.
Are you sure?
Absolutely.
Okay. Very well. Anything else? Then what we'll do is we will have public comment on the introduction. If you'd like to speak. And if you can please line up, no more than five at the back of the room so I can keep track. And this is specific to the introduction. Mr. Mayor?
A broad comment cannot be made now?
Yeah. It's the introduction, and it's pretty broad. Go for it.
Good morning, Chair, Supervisor's staff. My name is Tim Uderthies. As President Hoff indicated earlier, I am the Government Affairs Director for the Calaveras County Association of Realtors. We did not comment in public comment, or we did not respond in public comment as an organization, because we felt that the general plan was well-written and did a fair and equitable job of balancing the protection of property rights along with other interests. With respect to the 350 proposed changes from the current Planning Commission, we feel that there's a lot of wordsmithing that is going to result in the plan being a specific plan because it will no longer read as a general plan. We would urge you to go back and adopt the original general plan with the EIR mandated changes so that the county can move forward with a current viable general plan. If you're going to consider the 350 changes that are being proposed, we would urge you to reopen public comment, period, because those changes are drastic and unanticipated. Lastly, thank you for your time and consideration.
Vicki Ranky, Calaveras County. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the introduction as more of a reminder as we go through the rest of this document, that we keep the things in mind that are in this document as introduction. For example, "Seek to promote economic prosperity, protect property rights, and enhance Calaveras' unique blend of its productive resources, innovative economic pursuits for all to live in, work among, and enjoy." So, you know, remember, this was written in this policy. Guiding principles, property rights, the general plan will protect the rights of property owners. County government will respect and protect the property rights of people in their efforts to maintain or develop productive resources. The role of the plan, where practicable, the general plan will favor flexibility and adaptability. And then, under economic development, intends to promote an improved, business-friendly economic climate for the prosperity of its citizens. And then the desire to allow economic growth and fully recognize constitutionally property rights of the people of the county. Those statements are in this, and they're good statements, and we need to read those as we go through because that's not what I see when I read the rest of this general plan. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cora?
I agree with everything that Tim already said about this general plan and the introduction. I cannot believe that the board would give away their ability to make decisions by changing something from whatever it is to "shall." It is unbelievable that you would even anticipate the idea of giving up your ability to represent our constituency in Calaveras County. I'm disturbed about a lot of things about the plan, but that is definitely one of them.
Thank you. Ms. McBride?
Terry McBride, District 2. Over 300 changes from the original that the public has seen. You know, there's a word we use a lot after butte fire, bait and switch, because we were all pulled in on it with coming, "Oh, we'll clear your land for you. We'll take out the burned-out house and all that kind of stuff, bait and switch. Oh, you got to sign the paperwork for us to do that. It's not going to cost you anything, bait and switch." So that's what our county is going to be known as, bait and switch. If you're going to push this through, people need to see it and read it. "Shall" is an enforcement word. This country is built on small government and property rights. We don't want "shall." "May" is just fine. If we, as the people, don't like it, we'll come in here and we'll tell you. I have no doubt. But you put "shall," and you've put it throughout this thing, then those are the enforcement words. And our little county is going to go to wherever in a handbasket, and I don't want to see that. So you need to rethink this thing, and the folks that rewrote the Doggone Thing needs to put it back out to the public, and I guarantee you, they aren't going to like the word "shall." Because if they went to school and they understand the terminology, they're going to understand that is enforcement, and we are not wanting that. Small government. You guys are in charge of running this county, and yes, as a matter of fact, you can do it better in California. I have no doubt whatsoever, but you must maintain control so that you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Infacino?
Good morning, Tom Infacino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. As you know, you got a four-page memo from me yesterday with shortlist, and you'll be happy to know that, notice that when it comes to the introduction, there's only one thing I'm hoping you'll change. But before we go there, let's talk a little bit about "shall." If you, some people are concerned about the implications of "shall." I encourage them to read the entire document, because what Peter's very good at is putting words after "shall" that mean very little, that make "shall" mean almost nothing. For like, for example, "we shall consider." Well, that doesn't force you to do anything but "consider." Sometimes, "we shall encourage." That doesn't force you to do, force someone to do anything. All you have to do is encourage. There's plenty of weasel words in there to give you room. Second thing you need to know is anytime you're uncomfortable with the "shall," almost anytime you're uncomfortable with the "shall," you can change it to a "may" along the way. So that's other. The only time you absolutely need to have mandatory language is when you're, the policy's a mitigation measure, and they'll explain that when you deal with the EIR. So as long as you keep the "shall's" in the mitigation measures, you can change the other ones to encourage or promote or whatever you want. But regard to the introduction, the one issue is, the introduction says that uses that were lawfully established but will no longer be consistent with the general plan update and revised county code shall be allowed to continue such use under the non-conforming use provisions of Title 17 of the Code. Title 17 of the Code allows such uses to continue so long as they're not interrupted. They can even be reestablished after there's been an interruption. When a previously allowed use does not conform to its own, the goal of planning law is actually to eliminate that non-conforming use. And the county has failed to do that in the past, and there are some solutions. The first one is, do a good job when you're updating the zoning ordinance to avoid making things a non-conforming use. So we'll be, after this process, there'll be a zoning ordinance update process. That's a good opportunity to use to, "Hey, you know what? This use is a great use, you know, it's a farmer's market in a neighborhood. It's great, you know. Why don't we just allow farmers' markets in neighborhoods?" Stuff like that. So don't, don't go out of your way to make non-conforming uses. That's the first solution. The second solution is to do what other communities, which has done, is sort of, if something is a real problem, if there's a health and safety issue associated with it, allow that investment to amortize so that over time, they'll say, "Okay, you'll allow to continue use for the next 10 years, but at the end of that 10 years, you're done." That way you can have zoning and land use designations that work for the community and that give that person a chance to profit from his investment as he's coming to a close. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tom?
I have to differ with you on that, Supervisor Mills. And Terry, I'm a little surprised that I do differ with you. I'm wondering how differently we're reading this paragraph, but it seems to me that if you remove the preface of the county "shall" in this context, you might as well delete everything in the paragraph other than defining what goals and policies mean, because, well, the rest of it doesn't mean anything if you don't have the word "shall" in there. And that's my only comment. I like it. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Montgomery? Are there other speakers who wish to speak on this? I see where we're at. Okay, Al, you're up after Ms. Montgomery.
Go ahead.
Al, you're already there. Let's just go.
Alice Montgomery, District 3. I forgot to properly thank all of you for your hard work, and the reason why I'm commenting is because I heard it said that, you know, what Peter Maurer writes is not substantive or whatever they said that. I will always stick up for Peter Maurer. He does an excellent job, in my opinion, and he works super hard at this. The whole thing about "shall" reminds me, when Mr. Infacino talked, please forgive me, I do not mean any disrespect, but it reminds me of that Saturday Night Live sketch of Opposite Day. So when you say "shall," "shall" means "shall." "Shall" doesn't mean "kinda." So this is a general plan, and if it's supposed to be general, put in "may."
Al, I think this is the last speaker on this item? Was it? Check. You're up next.
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. We pretty well agree with what most had been said regarding the 350 changes. Some of these changes do make sense, do not harm property rights and are good. Other ones are problematical in that it would encourage lawsuits, and we don't need to encourage lawsuits. The general plan needs to be general, and above all else, we need to And above all else, we need to protect property rights. And his wording to that effect. And so, we agree with the Calaveras County Association of Realtors in their comments. And this needs to go back to the Planning Commission for, to be redone, to go back to the previous plan prior to the 350 changes. Thank you.
Ms. Cox?
Morning. My name is Jack Cox. The, I read through the plan in detail. And my biggest concern about it is a major plan with incredibly important changes with massive impact. I think you spent, I don't know how many millions, how much money you spent on the environmental impact report. I think what's missing in this plan is an economic analysis. There is no cost in the economic analysis that I could see in it. And before you go any farther with this, I think the county needs to engage in an economic analysis of the impact of this plan on the county relative to tax revenue, et cetera. I know various, some of the changes you want to make are going to reduce tax revenue from the county now and in the future. If you eliminate that land for development, you will also impact the county dramatically. So, I think the board needs to engage carefully in a cost-benefit analysis, an economic analysis of the impact of this report before it approves anything. Thank you.
Ms. Crane?
Party Crane, Valley Springs. Just very briefly, I wanted to remind us that for many, many years, we've all struggled with the word general because it's called a general plan. That does not mean it's vague. It means it's general. It encompasses everything. It's not, it just doesn't mean that it's supposed to be vague. And I attended a study session at the state with the state planning department, and they, they addressed that when we were there. Does not mean, let's be vague. Let's be clear. Let's be concise. But the word general means we're going to cover all the topics. Thank you.
Thank you. See, no further public comment. I will bring this back to the board for further discussion. Supervisor Stoppa, you had an item you wanted to bring up, and then we will catalog what we want to talk about and make some choices.
Yeah. Mr. Mills did bring up a concern of mine already. And then, back to the guiding principles, there's been a change in the role of the plan. You know, the first part of role of the plan where practicable, the general plan will favor flexibility and adaptability. Struck from this is be as general as possible rather than specific. And I think that, that, this, this, this isn't a binding statement that's been struck and that there are specific plans related within the general plan. And I think in the spirit of a general plan that this should be in part of the guiding principles.
What is your suggestion?
My suggestion is to reinstate verbiage in the sense of it's be, be general rather than specific.
Okay. That's the first one was touched out this process. Does anybody else want to change that wording? Yes. No, yes. Supervisor Stoffenelli, want to weigh in on that?
Well, I understand what Supervisor Stoppa is talking about. I had questions on it too. But if you read what is struck and then you read the remainder of that sentence, put together, it says where practicable, the general plan will favor flexibility and adaptability. So, general or specific, I think favoring flexibility and adaptability kind of covers what that was struck out. Although I wouldn't be opposed to reinserting that language. That's where the board wants to go. But I think the remainder of that sentence kind of covers that area. It doesn't say specific.
It's kind of a maybe. See, Supervisor Calloway?
I support leaving it as it's proposed.
I support leaving it as it's proposed too. Carrie? Leaving it as it stands? Supervisor Mills, you had a question regarding the may versus shall introduction?
I think that Peter's kind of alluded to an answer with it. But I, as we go through the document, I think we need to be very careful about where the shals put us into a position where we're required or requiring something be done and that we don't create legal issues simply because we've put ourselves in a position where we have to do this, and then we don't do it, it creates a problem. So, that's the only reason that I had brought that up.
So, you have a specific change you want to introduce or just stand?
Not at this time, but only just to bring the board and the public into awareness of the importance of that word and its implications and meanings going forward, especially when we're talking about implementation of policy.
Thank you very much. Any other further comments on the introduction from this board before we close this session and move on to this item two?
Chair on INT nine, in the interim zoning in relationship to zoning code, when we talk about must find all discretionary development to be consistent with the general plan, and it says where inconsistency exists, the land use designation shall apply. I almost sense a conflict here with those statements.
Got a question for Mr. Mauer?
Well, I think it, it goes back to, and it's going to go forward to, for instance, land use designations in the, in the future discussion. But to, to put a hard and fast statement in there, the land use designation shall apply, I think to some degree is going to tie future boards' hands and giving them a latitude to look at something specific and tell them that they can't even discuss it unless it fits within that land use designation which was created previously.
Is that, it's a statement or a question or change?
I would like to see that statement changed.
There's further support on this board for changing that statement before we start wordsmithing? Supervisor Stoppa?
I'm, I'm willing to discuss the wordsmithing of it.
Supervisor Calloway?
No.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Well, I'm, I'm willing to discuss it. I don't know what the proposal is and the change.
Okay. We have three votes to discuss it. Supervisor Mills, what are you proposing?
Well, I'm, my suggestion is, is where it says an inconsistency exists between zoning and general plan permitted densities, the development density of the general plan, land use shall be considered, not that it shall be applied. We have to keep in mind that future boards may see this as a tying of their hands, and I do not want to do that.
Supervisor, excuse me, Mr. Mauer, what is the impact of that change?
So, this is addressing the fact that once we adopt this general plan, there will likely be, there will be inconsistencies between the current zoning and the general plan. We will be bringing back a zoning map update to bring the zoning into compliance with the general plan. But it's going to take some time to do that. It's not going to happen next week. So, the idea here is if there is a project that's proposed that we need to make a final consistency with the general plan, and if there's an inconsistency between the zoning and the general plan designation, that designation would be the operative, that's what I'm looking for. You know, we would have to base our, our determination on, on consistency based on the general plan rather than the zoning.
And yet, Mr. Mauer, it is, it is the zoning which most people understand. Most people know that's what they're working towards. It is the zoning changes themselves that drive that economic engine, so to speak, in future development. If we say we're going to fall back to the land use element and say that's, that's the line in the sand, then we, we basically make the zoning subservient to, to the land use discussion.
And the zoning is subservient to the land use. The general plan has, is, in the hierarchy of things, the general plan is the top. You know, the zoning has to be consistent with the general plan. And then, all of the various other standards and, you know, guidelines that we might have would fall under that. So, the zoning is the, the top of the hierarchy, or the, the general plan is at the top of the hierarchy. The zoning is subservient to the general plan. But there will be a time period from adoption to when we can update the zoning to when there will be inconsistencies. And we just, what this statement is saying is that the general plan rules.
I see it as a tying of hands in the future. And I just wanted the board to, to look at it and realize what it is, and if they'd like to use the word considered instead of apply and not make it a hard and fast statement. That's, or the direction I would rather go.
The proposal is to change shall apply to be considered. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there further support for that change at this time? Supervisor Calloway, you want to go first?
I support it as written, shall apply.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Well, I, I understand what Peter's saying. Eventually, Title 17 will be coming to us, and it's the interim time. Because Title 17, once we update that, is going to be in compliance with the general plan. There may again be an interim time. I assume sometime next year, Title 17 will start getting into it, bring it to us to update it so it's consistent with the general plan. So, I'm, I'm in favor of just leaving it the way it is. We may have a small interim time here that Title 17 may not apply, and we have to go to when we get into land use element. So, I'm fine with it.
Supervisor Stoppa?
I'm, I'm fine with that, as it is.
Okay. It'll stay as it is. See, no further discussion on the introduction. We will move on to, it's 10:30? See, the clock stopped. I, I thought it was still 9:30. We're going to take a five-minute break and come back to start section two. I was like, dang, where? Cranking along. It's only 9:30? Welcome back. Well, we got through one element. It's pretty good, or one, at least introduction. We're going to move on to number two, the land use element. After the break and speaking with Director Mauer, we have decided that we will take this in two sections to make it easier for people. First section, we're going to discuss the text. The second, we're going to discuss the maps. And that will allow, because we have people here from both doing different things, and we want to make sure we don't mix everybody up as we go forward. So, if that works for the board, any objection to doing two pieces? There'll be two public comments as a result. Because I know some people want to speak to the maps, and some people want to speak to the text, and some people want to speak to both. But I want to make sure we do this correctly. So, Peter wants to take us into land use. We'll break for lunch at noon. So, we'll get her done.
So, the land use element is probably one of the key elements. It's the one that most people are familiar with. What's my land use designation? What can I do with my property? That's the first thing you look at. And so, we've broken down the county into a number of land use designations, ranging from industrial and commercial up to resource production and resource management, which is land that's owned or managed by a federal or state agency or some other agency that we don't have control over. The focus on land use and where this differs the most from the prior plan is we are trying to direct the growth towards our existing communities, to enhance those communities, to provide housing and employment opportunities within those communities rather than the more dispersed population that resulted from the prior plan. If you look at the old plan, there's lots of areas that was designated future single-family residential. Now, there were policies that applied to that that limited growth to some degree. But it gave, in a sense, a false impression that really housing development was appropriate anywhere in the county. And what we're finding is that the cost of providing services and infrastructure to that dispersed population is very expensive. And so, one of the key components, key changes from the proposed plan to what we currently have in the books is bringing that back. A lot of the area that was previously designated as future single-family is now working lands or even resource production. And we're just to look at trying to focus our growth where we can most afford to accommodate that. And I think that's probably one of the most fundamental issues and probably the most controversial issue associated with this plan. We have, and, and the map and the, the policy text are interlinked, obviously. We've, we've described each of the land use designations, what's appropriate within that. There's a table that says these zones are consistent with that land use designation. And then, we've looked at, in the policies and goals, you know, what are we trying to accomplish, you know, by this, by this map and by, you know, these, these goals and policies and measures. And again, it's to really try to support the economic development and housing development within our existing communities, to enhance those communities, make them more livable, more attractive for, for investment and infrastructure, and to reduce the costs of infrastructure improvements as well as providing services to dispersed populations. There is still plenty of land available for development. And one of the changes that the, the Planning Commission made was to, it made some modifications based on the growth projections, but we didn't change the land use map. So, there is sufficient land to more than accommodate the projected growth, not only the current projections, but what was projected at three times that rate in 2016. There's something probably around seven times the amount of land available. There's also many, many undeveloped parcels that currently exist in the, in the, in the county to accommodate people's desire to have different housing types and living conditions within, within the county. One of the key changes that the commission made was there is a, a land use designation identified as future-specific plan. And there are two areas designated, with that designation in the county, both happened to be in Copperopolis. These were proposals made by individual landowners that said, you know, I, this is sort of the idea that I have for this property. It, it, it would fit. The commission and staff were concerned about just giving it, say, a community center or historic center designation because of the broad scale of potential development. And so, that designation actually constrains the development to the limitations established in the policy. And I don't remember which specific policy that is. But what was once just a footnote in the table is now a specific policy that says this is what the, the limits are on development of these two locations and the expectations of what we would get out of that. There has been concern that this is preapproval of some project. It is not. What it's saying is, we believe that some level of development up to this, up to this capacity is appropriate for this location, just as we would say that this parcel over here is appropriate for commercial development, or another parcel over there is appropriate for high-density residential development. The commission felt that those two sites were appropriate for some type of future development, but wanted to put some constraints on it. It required to go through a specific plan process. There are some specific goals and objectives associated with those parcels of what they would like to see out of that. And so, that's contained in the new policy that the Planning Commission added to this. There's discussion about community character and design, you know, a section on that, infrastructure and how we ensure that, that infrastructure is provided to, to these communities. And all of these elements go hand in hand. You can't look at the land use element without looking at the public facilities and services element, for example. Or the, the, you know, when development comes up, we've got a lot of policies and the conservation and open space element that we have to look at as a part of this. But this sort of lays out the basic framework of where we expect to see development occur and how we can support that. Yes, with that, I'll turn it back over to the commission for any questions or ideas you have.
Mr. Trump. All right, who wants to jump in first?
All right, who wants to jump in first?
Mr. Riz.
Of course, it's Copperopolis. I have a concern that because being in the room at the time, and this was discussed in front of the Planning Commission back in 2016, there were other proposals that were brought before the commission that were not considered. And for various reasons, you know, could they meet the circulation element? Are there other requirements that might need to be there? Are future boards going to need to be forced into a situation because it says very clearly, quote, "after the approval of a, of a specific plan"? Does that put them into a position where we're just calling out only these two parcels in the future or should we be more general in our statement that future specific plans, no matter where they are in the county, will need to go, go through this same process? We're basically picking on these two potential future subdivisions rather than looking at this in the broader context of what could be possible in Valley Springs or any other area of Calaveras County? And this is a question. It's not a...
Um...
Do you understand my point?
Yes, I do. This is specific towards those two sites, the, the land use designation of future specific plan. It does not preclude someone from proposing a specific plan elsewhere. But what we're saying with this policy is that it is required of these two sites. And I should point out, there are four APNs that are missing from the first bullet point that I need to add in. And I don't have those, but I will bring them back. It's the entirety of the Sawmill Lake property.
Yeah, we caught that before.
That was inadvertently overlooked.
Exactly. The point is, is that I would like to be sure that we don't get into such specifics with a particular parcel that we fall away from our goal of creating a general plan. That we, we stay within the broad context. So if we want to have a discussion like this, let's, let's take out all of this language and say, any future specific plan would need to follow these guidelines and leave it at that. Don't call out particular APNs as being the, the point of contact as it is in this document right now.
The reason that this is called out was because when the potential future projects were presented to the Planning Commission, they said, what you're, what you're talking about makes sense. We don't think it makes sense to be all commercial or have, you know, 3,000 residential units, but that's specific proposals. So we had to sort of craft that, this designation with those proposals in mind. And, and those were limitations that the property owners said, this is what I'd like to do. I could live with that. We don't have to have it. It's somewhat unique. I have seen it in other counties, you know, where they've looked at potential future projects that were, you know, sort of in early, early stages, say, well, that makes sense, but we don't want to just sort of say, okay, it's, it's all appropriate for residential development and it could have 2,000 residential units on it. We want to limit it. So this was the Planning Commission's attempt to try to limit those two sites to what was presented to them at those early hearings way back in 2015 or 16. We could modify or maybe pull out the second paragraph of this or a second section of this as a separate policy so that it does apply to all future specific plans, if that's the desire.
That is the direction that I would like to go.
So maybe we just make that second section this...
Well, why don't we turn it back?
But let's, yeah, exactly.
And we can discuss that.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions? No questions or comments or available to change the presentation? There's a public comment. First up, this is on text, so if you want to talk about map, changing the map, that will come up next. So be specific to the text we're talking about.
I'm Will Moore in District Five. And seems what I'm seeing here is in all of development, all of it is assumed to be urban sprawl. There doesn't, in cities, they have smaller, less area and they build taller. And I think we should be looking at that kind of development instead of 100% urban sprawl. Anyhow, my objection is to urban sprawl.
Ms. Sciallo? Al Segal, the Taxpayer Association. We concur with Supervisor Mills' comments about being too specific in the general plan. But to expand on that with some thoughts, a good developer takes into consideration all the needs of human beings, not what some committee thinks those needs should be. And so there needs to be sufficient flexibility so that if a developer on any parcel that is suitable would put together a number of uses, like perhaps an office building combined with residential and some commercial, because the human beings that are working there will be able to walk to their home and walk to their, to buy, to buy food and other things. And this also could apply to light industrial. We need to have the flexibility so that future human beings that want to create something good for people will be able to do it with a minimal amount of red tape and obstacles from government. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Good morning. Chairman Yeremendi and members of the board. My name is Tom Hicks, CV Development Partners. We're the proud owners of all of the Castle &amp; Cook former holdings in Copperopolis. So I appreciate Supervisor Mills' comment on the specific plan. In particular, we, we've spent quite a bit of time at the Planning Commission hearings with Peter and, and we asked that the additional four parcels be included so that project can be designed in its entirety instead of just leaving other parcels outside of it. So I appreciate the fact that Mr. Maurer included that in there. With respect to the language, I, I was here at the Planning Commission hearing and I, I don't particularly have a problem with the language, but I do agree that it probably should be separated to allow other future specific plans in the county where they're appropriate. One other just general comment on the text is what I saw that was missing was the opportunity to insert something that promotes clustering of density in the county. I didn't see that anywhere in the text and I think it's a, it's a good idea to do that. And, and I think it can create a much better project when you cluster and leave more open space. So I would ask that the board consider including that in the text. I'll have another comment when you get to the map, but that's all my comments for now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I believe in American ingenuity and I believe that what Supervisor Mills' concerns are and Al's concerns are said much better than I could say it and I concur with their opinions. And I would hope that you guys would be careful about giving up our freedom.
Thank you. Thanks, Speaker.
Good morning, Mike Coria. Sorry. Just a question for Mr. Maurer, a clarification statement you made. When in the previous plan, land use was designated as future residential and you said you put out resource production because of the cost of services, providing services to those parcels. Were any existing lots, like buildable lots, converted to resource production now? He's concentrating on his...
Mike?
Sir?
The way we generally do this is address the board.
Okay.
We'll have a rebuttal at the end. And if we want to ask the staff those questions, but we don't do the Q and A.
Copy that. So you got my question?
Why don't you restate it just so we're all clear.
So Mr. Maurer stated that previous land use designated as future residential was now designated as resource production. And the reasoning for that was the cost of providing services and infrastructure to those parcels. So my question is, were existing parcels, buildable far, for example, you know, one to 10 acre parcels are now in a resource production land use designation? So would somebody who had a, you know, bought parcels 20 years ago, going to build on some date now they can't because it's, the land use has been changed? And the other note that, that the logic behind that, a lot of people now are building off the grid. There's a lot of, you know, building industry, so you can be completely off the grid. You have a well water, you don't product, you know, you don't, the public is not required to provide infrastructure to these parcels because they can live totally, you know, on their own. So I'm just curious if that is possible under the proposed U plan or not. All right? Got you. Probably could have said it better, but that's about as good as I can get. Thanks.
I just wanted to make comments on the land use element. Again, looking at what is being said in this document and then looking at what's been written. So in paragraph three, the general plan land use element, it, at the last sentence says, "while preserving property rights and addressing the needs of the marketplace." The marketplace is not dictated by government. The marketplace is dictated by people and their need for housing. They, developers want to develop. I mean, you can go around saying, this is where we're going to put houses, but if there's nobody that wants to develop it, it's not going to happen. And so this is, I guess, obviously you know that I get very concerned about what we are doing to our, our citizens, what we're doing to our country. So this is just another one of those places where we should have it in our minds that this is an open market that causes development and it's not us telling people whether they can or not. Now, they would have to come before the Planning Commission if they want to develop something and explain what they want to do and go through all those processes with the neighbors, making sure that their development looks good. But when we start just restricting property because, I don't know, somebody thinks that's not a good idea because they've got some power? No, this is not right. So that's one of the things about, I wanted to make a comment about with concerns. And again, our population growth has gone way down. This county does not grow. And this won't make it grow either. This plan is going to make it no growth. Who would come into this county on this plan and try to develop something? They would be crazy to waste their money. So the other thing too, and again in that word shall, there is a lot of encourage in here, which has been good, but there are some shells that are of concern. LU 3.6, development shall adhere to the density, land use intensity and water and sewage disposal standards. Some of that is okay, but some of it isn't. When you say shall adhere to the density, well, let's see what the density is that they want to develop. Maybe it's something we could live with. So anyway, again, the word shall in this document is of concern. Thank you.
Thanks, Speaker.
Good morning, Board. Ron Cops speaking on behalf of the Sangonetti Ranch, which is the second bullet point up there. Just a couple of points. I think it is important that you allow specific plans that allow flexibility and allow the marketplace to look at where you're going. As Peter pointed out, when you have things like community center and residential center, they tend to lock in what you can do with that and they become very restrictive and they don't allow the flexibility in design to deal with the tourism-based components and the recreation base and allow the open space and the other pieces of mixed use that you want to tie in to these different projects. So I think it is very important that you provide for specific plans and you provide for the ability to do more specific plans down the road because I think that's going to allow, allow you to have more flexibility and better development in your county as you go, as you go forward. A gentleman mentioned before about infill development. Infill development is important and both of these projects are surrounded by development in urban areas with high traffic areas by them tying into water and sewer and other things with it. So it does make sense to, to look at it from that standpoint. I was also at the Planning Commission when some people brought up some points about some of these different projects and they said, well, let's go back to the 1996 because that had a lower density. Well, I can tell you when you look at the 1996 general plan for the Sangonetti Ranch, it actually had significantly higher density. And when you look at a specific plan that ties in some of the additional components with the recreation and the open space, it ends up being at a lower, a lower density, but it's more conducive with cluster development and other things that work better for the project. So I think it does make sense that you go forward with these specific plans and allow flexibility going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker. Marty? Come on down.
Marty Crane, Valley Springs. I heard what Planning Director Maurer said about there's still lots of land to be developed. There's still a lot of trees to be cut down too, so there's another side of that. But also, when we're talking about land use and over the years, we've heard unintended consequences over and over and over again. And when you look at the 30,000-foot level, you see something totally different than, than when we're driving through town. Usually when we notice development, it's because the traffic has become a little more congested and we go, what happened? Well, people are developing, you know, and more people are coming in. And, but years ago Supervisor Terry Bailey said, Marty, there are lots and lots of parcels out there that have been approved that are not yet developed. You won't even recognize Rancho and Valley Springs area once they're developed. And she was absolutely right. And you see that when you come home late in the evening where the lights are on and you go, what happened to my town? And it's very shocking. So we've also talked about night skies. People that are new to the area think they're just gorgeous. But if you've been here for 30 years, you know that they're no way near the magnificent that they were 30 years ago because of all the lights. And so we talk about night skies and it all has to do with our land use development. But we don't talk about the day skies. And recently, it, I was quite shocked when I, suddenly I was driving out and it just keeps showing all the, the overhead lines are just crisscrossing everywhere. And there's, it, it's, it's wild. All you have to do is go look. It's, I don't know what happened. Suddenly there's just more poles, more lines and they're everywhere and you can't look up and see the sky hardly without looking through all the lines. Anyway, so please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McManus?
Bill McManus. When I hear words like urban sprawl and things like that, it starts, it kind of, the ghost of Agenda 21 are coming back, that we're supposed to build up and we're supposed to ignore the rural nature of our county. Urban sprawl is what some people may call it. Others may call it a rural lifestyle that they enjoy. And you have to remember that Calaveras County is unique in that we have land where people can come here and enjoy property the way they like it, not 10,000 square foot lots or three-story buildings or anything else. They want to come here for a specific reason. Calaveras County, another counties like us in the foothills are unique. When you start saying that we're going to control urban sprawl or we're going to require building up, you have changed the general plan. From a general plan to a very specific plan is going to eliminate all that because it won't conform with the general plan if you want to have a house on 10 acres or five acres or whatever, whatever the zoning may allow. That's what gave Calaveras County its attraction. That's why people came here. If you wanted to build up, go to Modesto or Turlock or someplace like that. They're already doing it. Obviously, a lot of people want to get out of that environment and come back up here. So I think when you start getting specific and used terms like that, it's not fair to the people who came here for a certain reason. And I don't think it serves us well for the future to attract more people to come here. We don't have to have high-rise buildings to get people to come to Calaveras County. Thank you.
Tom? Tom Vasino, Calaveras Planning Coalition. I'm going to direct you to both the very beginning of the element and the very end of the element. Everything in between is fine. We have only two suggestions for land use element. First, implementation LU-1.0A. That's implementations are toward the end of the element. That implementation says that the, on an annual basis, the board will get together and set implementation priorities for the general plan. You don't have, a lot of counties at the end of their general plan have this long list of, here's the 36 things we want to do. We're going to do these in the first five years and these in the second five years. You don't have that. What this plan... What this plan does is say, okay, we know you've got about three dozen things you want to do. Every year you're going to meet and say, which two or three are we going to do this year? Okay? It's a good idea. At the planning commission hearing in May, the planning director was not confident that he could complete a list of staff, time and financial requirements for each implementation task in the GPU. Please consider hiring some staff or consultant to complete that task. That way, when you sit down as the board on an annual basis to figure out what the priority is for this year, you'll know how much it's going to cost and how long it's going to take and what you're going to need to hire staff to do it. I think you need that information to make those decisions. So that's my suggestion for LU 1 dash A. The very beginning of this element, table LU dash 1, gives a level of building intensity and population density for each land use designation. With climate change, we expect groundwater to be less reliable. On the other hand, state laws are requiring more certainty for water supplies for development. Water supply analyses are required for larger discretionary projects. Groundwater management plans are being completed for groundwater basins. Some counties are looking at managing the number of wells dug. Even our 1996 plan includes a map crudely acknowledging that some areas of the county have more reliable groundwater than others. However, the land use designations in the draft general plan update seem oblivious to these concerns. For example, while we know the groundwater problems experienced in the, on the 20 acre lots in Diamond 20, the rural residential land use designation is allowing groundwater dependent residential development on parcels just over five acres in size. Similarly, commercial recreation resort developments with no minimum parcel sizes and a four area ratio of .25 can be groundwater dependent as well. One way you can deal with this is to limit the density of groundwater dependent development. Another option is to look, is to broaden the spectrum of things that need to be served by public water. So we'd hope that you'd consider those two things. Thank you. And point of order, real quick?
We don't do points order from the audience.
We encourage you to put all your cards on the table before, so we can comment on them now.
Tom? Please, come on. Antonette?
Anthony Werster from McCollumie Hill. I have several concerns. I think all of us have heard about the shortage of affordable housing. And what that means to me is you may want somehow in this general plan to be more resilient in your requirements. You may want to have some land where people can provide their own water, their own septic tank, their own food, and give them a chance. So some of the things you have in here for housing look like they would be quite expensive to do. And the other, the other thing is people come here because they like the way it looks. They like the old buildings. They like the beauty. And they like the fact that there's no traffic signals anywhere hardly. I mean, it's marvelous. And they're not really looking for multi-family, multi-story buildings. And you know, every time you talk about doing things like that, it's more for an urban environment rather than a rural environment. Our, our real strength for tourism is our rural atmosphere. And I felt really bad when I saw the tractor supply go in, in, at Angels Camp, Altaville, and the way they concreted, et cetera. So I just thought, you know, it doesn't look like the rest of the county. So I think it's, there's a lot of charm in what we have already in our older cities like San Andreas, McCollumie Hill, Angels Camp, Murphy. There's something that draws people to us. They're tired of maybe the traffic in Sacramento. They don't really want to see multi-story buildings. And we always have to remember safety of the public. Do we have fire engines that can accommodate? Do they have ladders that can accommodate additional height more than a two story building? I don't know, but somebody should be asking those questions. So I'm just thinking that this to me seems kind of a little too tight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill?
I'm Will Moore from Rancho Calaveras. I want to rebut a little bit what Bill McGovern was saying. He's, he's talking about a house on 10 acres. Well, most of the influx coming into this county is retired couples. So you're going to have this couple with a house living on 10 acres. So for 100 of them, you're going to have 100 houses on 1,000 acres. Or for 1,000 of them, you're going to have 1,000 houses on 10,000 acres. This kind of development doesn't make sense. For one thing, it's not affordable. There's an affordable housing problem. Most of those people who are coming here, these retired people, are coming because it's affordable, not because they can have a 10 acre rancho of their own. They're mostly here because it's affordable. And, you know, for most of those peoples to maintain a 10 acre ranchette is too much maintenance, you know? Just, you could build 100 unit high rise on 100 acres and have 100 acres of scenery around the high rise. Anyhow, I'm not saying that the government should control all of this, but that we could encourage what, forgot, forgot what I was going to say, but anyhow, you can't control it, but you could encourage more of this cluster type development or high rise development rather than this urban sprawl. The way it is now, the whole thing is 100% urban sprawl. There's no, there's no alternative, nothing else. Thank you.
Speaker. Jack?
Jack Cox.
Yeah, Jack?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead.
I heard the term reinvent the wheel. The other, other day I went through, through the study Planning for Prosperity by the Sierra Business Council. I work with them a lot and it was funded by the Hewlett and Packard Foundation. I would suggest that if you talk about looking at the big picture, they put it together very, very well. I think, Marita, you're familiar with it. Where they basically said, our greatest asset is our natural environment, our history, et cetera, and we need to, we need to preserve that. But we need to do, we need to set up policies that are consistent with economic growth. We can grow the economy at the same time we can protect these resources. Gentlemen suggested clustering. But I think that report, I would suggest that the board, if you've never read it, reread it because it really, I hear a lot of people talking about these things. This is, this was debated and put together in the best study I've seen 16 years ago. So it does an excellent job and I think it's vitally important. We need to understand, if we don't have more people, we can't get more healthcare. This gentleman just talked about senior citizens moving here. Older men, older women get strokes. If you're not 30 minutes from the hospital, you're going to be not, probably going to make it. So we need economic growth provided for healthcare, et cetera. But I, I just wanted to, just, I was thinking about that study and I really think you all, if you haven't read it, need to read it and it ought to be brought into this whole discussion. Thank you.
Speaker.
Terry McBride, District 2. What about families, you know, that live on 10 acres, five acres, have gardens, have play yards and that sort of thing? I respect the seniors' right to move where they want to, but the reality is this county was built on family. We played baseball up in the baseball park and soccer and got every sport under the sun. I sat out and watched my boys play. And you are giving this away to the folks that worked in the city and then wanted to come live in the country in a packed house, stacked? We don't live in that. Go look at El Dorado Hills. Take Latrobe when you do it. We used to drive Latrobe when I was a kid. It's nothing like it used to be. All stack and pack. That's all it is. That's how people want to live. They all need to live here. I'd rather see the marijuana grows. I far would rather see acres of marijuana and orchards and farms and ranches instead of stack and pack. Thank you. This is Calaveras County, rural agriculture. It's meant for families. And do you know what? Those families, the parents work, they spend money generally locally. A lot of the folks that move here from the city, guess where they shop? Generally, not locally. Now we have tractor supply. I will not stop in that store. I will not spend one dime because that is not part of our community. So think about this community that we love. Don't be selling out to the folks that want to bring in all the senior citizens, you know, and respect them. They've worked hard to get to where they are, but not to change the way that this county is. This is agriculture. It is rural and this is how we like it. And it has to remain that way because that's what makes it beautiful. And the people that live here, hardworking folks, and that's what we want. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I'll bring this back to the board. Dennis is the, is the only one that earlier brought forward one item. Is there other items that want to be discussed or should we, do you want to? Let me stop real quick. Peter, you want to have any rebuttal to any?
Well, rebuttal so much as just maybe answer a couple of questions. Mr. Segala brought up the issue of, you know, ability to provide mixed uses and that's exactly what the community center and historic center does. So it provides a broad range of uses, including residential, commercial and some light industrial. Mr. Boyan asked about existing lots. And when we get into the map, you'll see that there are, you know, we, we've tried to base the land use designation on existing landing patterns. We've got, you know, lots of five and 10 acre parcels throughout the county and we've recognized that through the rural transition designation. Any legal lot that's out there will remain a legal buildable lot. That's part of the introduction statement about not conforming uses. So if you end up with a five acre parcel and a working lands designation, that is a legal buildable lot that can be developed, you know, with whatever the zoning allows for that.
Thank you. So bring it back to the board. Dennis is the only one who's put forward a, an idea so far on this. Is there anybody else who wants to tweak the text? Dennis, you want to add to, to your list?
Additionally, and I know it was brought up in public comment about the, like the annual work plan, the general plan review, those kind of things, you know, as I may not have mentioned, but there's almost 100 implementation measures that are going to be required as a result of this general plan that's going to put staff in a whirlwind of trying to determine just what of these is priority and how quickly can we accomplish them? So I'm, I'm getting real concerned about, do we want to put ourselves in a position of an annual work plan? Do we want to be able to, to state very clearly to future boards that you, you must review the, the general plan every five years? Those kinds of statements are, again, tying future, future boards' hands. That's LU 1 dot A and 1 dot B. Again, this goes back to LU 2A, updating the zoning ordinance. It's making it a requirement, creating a mixed use zoning, that's requiring, it's, it's LU 2B, not being optional or even at a board discretion. Adopt lighting, dark sky ordinance, that's going to be a requirement. Adopt landscape ordinance, that's going to be a requirement. Update the county code on historic commercial. Update the Calaveras County code on signage. Update the code on parking. Adopt standards for buffers and setbacks. You know, it goes on and on. So the implementation side of this is, is, is quite intense for, for the land use piece. So I'm, I'm very concerned about that we're, again, being, pushing our staff and pushing ourselves into positions where when we don't accomplish those goals, it's going to leave us open to litigation in the future. So I don't want to be that specific. I think development, if we're going to talk about development, we're not really, we're saying moving to housing. Really, I think it even goes further than that because it becomes down to a higher intensity use period. So if you have grazing lands and you're moving it over to nut farms or you have grazing land that's moving up to grapes or whatever it might be, that's a higher intensity use. We should be looking at any kind of higher intensity use in that discussion about what development or what are the requirements that are going to need to be met for that different, that change in use, even though it's really not a change in land use. And that is, that's my comments at this point.
Okay. Ms. Rose Calley?
Thank you. I somewhat have to agree, disagree with my colleague. I like the idea of the, on LU 1A, that the planning director brings to the board an annual work plan. I think it puts us in the driver's seat. We are the ones that establish the priorities. We are the ones that would make the budget available. We are the ones that would say, gee, if we want those 10 items to be done this year, then we have to provide the resources to the department. No different than all of us ran for election on the general plan's the most important thing. So here we are, up here, finally having this document before us. As for the dark sky ordinance, I can't even begin to tell you how many years ago I asked for a dark sky ordinance. So that better stay in. At least, at least. So I think that the onus in this doc, in this land use document, one, is upon the board to make decisions. I don't feel in any way that my hands are tied, nor do I feel the community's hands are tied. We can amend the general plan four times a year? Am I correct unless that's changed?
That's correct.
Okay, good enough. So there's opportunities and, but I do have a question that came up with a gentleman back there in the yellow shirt and glasses. His first name's Rod or Ron. I can't remember your last name, sir. I apologize. I think it was. No, it wasn't you, but it's close, it's close enough. Forget who brought it up. My question is on clustering. I mean, I like the idea of clustering. So if we go to LU 1.6 and it states 580 total residential and lodging units, would they, under a specific plan? Oh, it was Mr. Hicks. Thank you. I remember now. Okay. Would they be allowed to cluster?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay, so clustering would be allowed?
There is nothing that prohibits clustering. I thought that there was language in here that actually encourages, as I recall, the planning commission took out the word clustering, but they wanted to keep.
Community center. Community center.
Community centers, what I've read throughout the plan, which would push it to more densely populated areas while still providing people with their working land and other parcels to develop outside that as long as they were in compliance with the requirements.
Right. But, but even someone that's not within the community center, if there's, you know, a rural subdivision and, and you have, you know, 100 acres with five acre minimum parcel size, you've got 20 parcels. You could put those 20 parcels on one acre parcels and leave the remaining 80 acres in, you know, a larger open space lot. That, that kind of clustering is still, you know, allowed, encouraged. If we want to add some language to make that more explicit, we certainly can. I'm trying to remember where, where it was exactly in the text, but I thought there was language that talked about.
4.4.
4.4, thank you. Encourage clustering of residential development where appropriate. And we could, you know, change that to just, versus clustering of development, doesn't have to be limited to residential. If that's, you know, something the board desires. But so, so we do encourage clustering and it, there's a variety of benefits. It reduces costs for, cost of infrastructure, it protects resources, there could be a part of the property that's just unsuitable for development and you could move away from that. So there's a variety of reasons why we want to keep that in there.
Another issue that was raised on future. Another issue that was raised, on future specific plans. I thought the document addresses that. I didn't see why we couldn't. It says, "Future specific plans are expected to," et cetera. That's under LU 1.6. I didn't see a need for us to expand on that anymore. Those are my comments so far.
I've only, on my list, I've only got one specific ask for change from Dennis earlier. A lot of general comments was there. And Maria, I want to just check with you two if there's specific items so we can move through the checklist.
I think I would look at LU 4.4. It says, "Encourage clustering." Is, if you tell someone that, for instance, in this case of LU 1.6 of the 580 units, that if they cluster, they still have 580 units total, it's not an encouragement to cluster. How would we change the verbiage so that we give them an incentive, if that's the goal, to cluster without causing them to, in essence, push all of their housing into one spot?
Sir, are you proposing a change in the words for 4.4?
For 4.4.
Okay.
So, 4.4 is a general policy.
Right.
And I'm looking at, we've got two implementation measures that, 2.a. and 2.e. that talks about how we would encourage. So, 2.e. directs us to adopt standards that fits with cluster development. So, it would be through the zoning code or through those kind of standards that we would actually come up with the specific measures that would provide that encouragement. It could be a density bonus. It could be reduced, you know, fees, whatever we might come up with at that point in time. Rather than try to get into that level of detail here at the general plan, we're saying, as a policy, we want to encourage development. To do so, we're going to adopt these new standards that work, and we'd have to work with the development community to come up with what's going to be sufficient encouragement to, you know, provide, to make them want to, not make them want to, but to have the desire to do more clustering.
I guess, sorry. The goal, to me, should be, instead of the word encourage, might be to change the word to incentivize in some way. I mean, if we use the word incentivize, then it will drive us through a policy to trying to find incentives to clustering. So, that would be my only request, is to change the word to incentivize.
I've got that one down.
Thank you.
I think when addressing things like this and just sticking to one thing and then thinking about incentivizing it, you have to read the document in its entirety because other parts start to address these incentives, like if you refer to LU 3.c., cooperation with special districts and agencies, to, basically to assess the availability and capacity of public facilities and services for future development. So, at this point, if we were working with special agencies, how are we going to best provide these services to, you know, this falls in hand, hand in hand with clustering, you know, because more agencies are able to facilitate services at a cheaper rate if infrastructure isn't stretched out five acres apart. You know, there's a substantial cost to that. So, I understand where Mr. Mills is going, but I don't think we, as a county, should be giving for someone else to develop their property, you know? They should fall within these confines that are set before us. So, I don't want to start providing incentives.
Well, let's see whether there's interest on this board and discuss that. Then, do you have any specific items you'd like to address?
A lot of the stuff's been brought up already, but also with regional planning and cooperation, LU 6.a. The only entity it talks about is Angels Camp, and I think that should be, the wording should be more inclusive, whether it be District 2 and working with CPUD or other special districts. I think that should be included in that just because it does take that cooperation, and then you refer back to LU 3.c., and it does address it there, but I think it needs to be addressed further with the regional cooperation because you, maybe I'm, maybe it's already stated before, so maybe I'm going over, but...
Peter, is that, did you understand Mr. Stoppa's point?
Yeah, so whether to just narrow the, you know, the focus of regional planning cooperation, we need to broaden that to look at other agencies based to provide service. This was specifically addressing the fact that we do have an incorporated city in the county. There is a sphere of influence that is adopted through LAFCO that says, it's still in the county, but it's expected over time to become part of the city. And so, we have a very unique relationship between the city and the county on this issue. Under the public facilities and services element, there are a number of policies that address cooperation, fire districts, water districts, sewer districts, and other special districts. So, I think it's addressed sufficiently.
All right.
This is, I think, unique to that issue of...
So, there's no reason to reciprocate it here because it's addressed elsewhere?
I don't think it's necessary. It probably would harm to expand that to other agencies, but I think it's addressed elsewhere.
It's in the public safety.
So, maybe I should suggest not necessarily staying, but other agencies as needed or, you know?
I would not, unless I change that measure. If there's a desire to add another measure that talks about regional cooperation...
Maybe I'm overthinking that.
Let's pull and see what the interest is if we need to add that. Supervisor Toffnelli?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things here, but the first comment I want to make is, Supervisor Calloway, four times a year. This took 12 years to get here. Four times a year.
Peter, are we? What is...
Amendment.
So, an amendment to the plan is certainly different than rewriting the whole darn thing. The land use element can be amended four times a year. There are other, how is it, general or government code requirements on other elements, but as a sort of a general rule, yeah, four times a year you can amend the general plan.
At this point, the only thing I have is on LU 2.f. We're in parentheses. We're requiring, we shall evaluate for long-term employment versus constructions, which is in parentheses. I would like to strike that entirely.
Which section, Supervisor?
Well, he has, there's two LU 2.f.s that we have in our package here that was given to. One of them just says, "Long-term versus construction jobs," but the other one says, "Long-term employment versus construction job." I don't see the necessity for having that in there at all.
So, you would propose striking everything within the parentheses?
Strike that completely out. I don't see the need for it.
Okay, let me, if it's all right with you guys, let me, let's go through this poll and see where everybody is at. We'll go bottom of the table. Supervisor Toffnelli is proposing striking the term, "Long-term versus construction jobs," that sits in parentheses in LU 2.a. Isn't it?
Mr. Mauer, why, is there a specific reason that that's in there?
That was language proposed by the Planning Commission. My understanding was that, you know, they want to look at the long-term economic benefits as opposed to the short-term benefits of, you know, construction jobs that, you know, once a project is done, those jobs go away. That was the concern.
Thank you.
So, is there, is there, what's the support level for removing that term? Supervisor Stoppa?
I support that one.
Supervisor Mills?
I support it.
Supervisor Calloway?
Yes.
Yes, so if you'll strike that, we have first change LU 2.f., striking long-term versus construction jobs, the section in between the parentheses. Supervisor Stoppa, you're okay with the agency discussion that we had?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, Supervisor Mills, your first request was on LU 1.6, removing the paragraph on future specific plans, which I began...
No, it's more to adding or amending to add a LU 1.7, if that would be the more appropriate thing, so that when it starts, future specific plans are expected to include that we would have that as a new element.
Okay, let me check. What is the, do you want to...
So, as I understand it, this land use policy 1.6 talks about the specific policies, and then there's a more general statement at the end of it, and you're suggesting that becoming separate policy and numbered LU 1.7.
Correct. Is there any material?
I don't see any concern with that. I think that, in a way, it provides a broader scope of, it's not just specific to these two potential projects, but it would apply to any other specific plan, and there's no reason why we wouldn't want to look at those with other specific plans. So, I think it makes sense.
So, let me articulate this. We will take everything that starts at future specific plan under LU 1.6, break it down to LU 1.7.
Correct.
Did it fall boards? Supervisor Toffnelli?
We would have to change the remaining 1.6 and add the verbiage LU-2.f. to it. Is that correct, Mr. Mauer?
LU 2.a. would apply to both of them.
Would apply, but we, in order to make this correct, we need to add that verbiage in 1.6.
Yeah.
Also, the missing APNs.
Yes.
Yes, and also the...
Okay, so...
I would support it.
Including the amendment and the...
And the four APNs.
Four missing APNs. LU 2.f. LU 2.f. goes at the bottom of 1.6 and the bottom of 1.7. Supervisor Stoppa?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills, obviously, yes. Supervisor Calloway?
Yes. There we go. You had...
We would need to make a comparable amendment to measure LU 2.f. that also refers back to 1.7.
Correct. You need that.
That's what you were... Tie them together.
Yes.
Yes. Let me move on. Supervisor Mills suggested LU 4.4, changing the term, "Encourage to incentivize." You still want to propose that, Supervisor Mills?
Yes, sir.
All right. Supervisor Calloway?
No.
Supervisor Stoppa?
No.
Supervisor Toffnelli? Fails to move forward. With that, I believe we have...
Where would you vote?
I would vote for it.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
He wanted it on record, didn't he?
You want me on record?
On record, yeah.
You can go for a roll poll if you want to. Sorry about that, Maria. I'll be sure to jump in there. I do not mind being on the record. So, that should wrap up the text part of the land use.
So, just so I'm clear, no misunderstanding. We're amending policy LU 1.6 to split that into two policies and making, adding the four parcels that were missed from the Planning Commission, as well as making sure the reference to the implementation measures on both policies. And then we have a change to measure LU 2.f. We're striking the words in the parentheses, "long-term versus construction jobs," and we're adding the reference to the new policy. Anything else I missed?
Yeah, I got, yes, and I have one correction. The correction would be on page LU 23. That is LU 5.e. 5.d. 5.e. echo. Okay. It speaks to the Calvares Economic Development Company. It's no longer active. So, let's do a quick poll. Everybody okay with striking that? All right, it seems... We'll stay consistent. Striking the term, "Economic Development Company," as it, Calvares Economic Development Company, as it no longer exists.
I'm fine with that.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Yes.
Supervisor Calloway?
Yes.
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 Got it?
Yeah.
All right, we've got 20 minutes. Can we do the maps?
I suppose we can get started. I doubt that we'd be able to finish all the public comment by that time.
What do you guys want to do? Take a lunch early or try to get this started?
Try and get it started.
Are we good?
And we could ruminate over lunch.
Ruminate over lunch, yes. Mr. Mauer, take us forward.
Okay. So, the land use map, with rubber hits the road, at least as far as individual property owners are concerned. We have identified, we've talked about the different land use designations. As you can see by this map, we have a very scattered lotting pattern, and we have tried to identify those areas that are already developed and recognize that those are there. We're not, we have no intention of trying to say, oh, those parcels are no longer valid. We want to try to consolidate those. Those are legal parcels, you know, vested with the ability to, you know, use it under the Constitution of the United States, and we're certainly not going to violate that. What we have done, however, is that we've looked at where is the best areas that we can support new development, where is the infrastructure, where are our sensitive lands, and put, you know, appropriate designations where there are. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I won't get into a lot of discussion. There were two corrections I wanted to make, and let me go to another page. One area, and I just noticed this the other day as we were talking about a potential project. Let me shrink that down a little bit so we can see it. At Toyon, and I'm really not sure the genesis of this, but I noticed on, just the other day, that on the north side of the highway, the intersection there, the land use designation is commercial for a number of the parcels, even though it's all currently zoned M4. I don't know why that is the case, and I think this should be changed to industrial, to reflect what's already out there. Most of these, or some of these parcels are already developed. In fact, if I go down to the next page, you can see the sites that are already developed. This parcel here, which is the large PG&E substation, is designated as resource production, and it's currently zoned unclassified. I would include that in this change as well.
That's PG&E.
That's the PG&E. I mean, clearly an industrial use. Because of the existing zoning, the types of impacts associated with industrial and commercial on the, toward the broad scale of traffic generated, the kind of disturbance that would occur, will not adversely affect the analysis done in EIR. So, I think this is more of a correction than it is a significant change, without identifying new land that say, we want to put some new industrial development out here. I think that even though not all the parcels are currently developed, that this essentially reflects what has been the case. We have an existing industrial subdivision approved several decades ago, and so that is one change I would recommend that we do as a correction. And there may be some history here that I'm not aware of. This was, this part of the map was actually prepared before I came on, and it just was something that I overlooked in reviewing the maps.
Supervisor Toffnelli, your district, you seem like you have some information.
Can you tell me, in our current Title 17, what the setback on commercials is, commercial property?
It varies.
It varies?
And I know where you're going on this.
Is it 50 feet? I don't think in commercial it's 50.
The M4 zone has a 50-foot front setback. The setback for other industrial zones is 30 feet. The setback for commercial varies from zero setback, depending on how you address the fire safety. I don't want to get involved in a specific project, but we will address that. I think we're working on a solution to the concern you have about a specific project in this area that I think we can resolve. But it just seems like, given the uses that are out there, to designate this commercial is creating nonconforming uses, and I think that was something that was brought up by someone in the public previously, that we don't want to do that. And so, I would recommend that we change these parcels that are currently designated as commercial to industrial. The other change is just simply a mapping error that was made with the, the Planning Commission changes. This is at the south end of, we can't add a little bit here. So the south end of Forest Meadows, it used to be a part of Forest Meadows Unit 3, I think, which has since expired. The owner talked, you know, brought it forward to the planning commission. We have an existing approved boundary line adjustment where some of these parcels, it entails a much larger area, but these three parcels were mapped as rural transition A, and they should have been rural transition B. And so this is just, and this is what the planning commission recommended. It was just an error when we were doing the update to the map. And so these three parcels here should be B, not A. And so those are the two changes that I would like to do is essentially map corrections as opposed to, you know, wholesale change of the land use map.
Is the parcel owner aware?
He has specifically requested this, and in fact emailed me this morning, saying, are you going to make that correction for me? And I just want to be sure the parcel owner was aware.
Any questions from the board? Do you have any comments before we get to public comment? All right, we will still break for lunch at noon, so if you have comments on the map, sorry Susan. We are still going to break at lunch for, at noon for lunch. So if you have comments on the map and you are not going to be able to return after lunch, and you could work with your neighbors, probably be courteous to let those folks go ahead if you can return. If not, we'll just go in order of people standing, and at noon I'll pull the plug. So we've got about 12 minutes, so we'll see how many people we get through. Ma'am, you'd be first.
Susan Hardinbrook, I'm in Murphy's, and I'm also in District 2. In 2017, I believe, I didn't learn about it until 2018, the assessors changed my parcels from two into one. And so I see it on here still as being two, and then there's mixed use. I was wondering why? The question is, are we using the current assessors' maps when we're doing this, or we're using ones from 2016, or what, 2003, when we got started? That's my question, because my current property has been put, two of the parcels that were separated have been put into one, and it's still specified here as two. And I've got working lands, and I've got resource production on different parts of my single parcel. Thank you.
Mark?
Mr. Chair, would you like me to address some specific questions like that?
No.
No, okay, I'll wait.
At the end, we'll have rebuttal, which is we can pick those up.
Good morning. My name's Weber San Andreas. I'm here representing Tom and Rhonda Hurd and Sharon McCloglin, who have a request for a land use classification. First, I'd like to express my thanks that I'm not up there on the Board of Supervisors having to deal with this issue. Thank you for your duty there. My English teacher would be thrilled to death how you have to deal with the language issues that have come before you today. Now specifically, the request I'm making on behalf of the property owners, apologize for the tardiness. One of them, the Hurd's, just recently purchased the property, and the other one, Sharon McCloglin, is an absentee owner, and there was no change proposed in the land use element, so she wasn't aware of the change. The recent fire a couple of years ago has adversely affected this industrial property. And currently, at this time, all of the mining equipment has been removed from the property. The current use has been grazing the cattle. It's currently zoned, or land use classification is industrial. On July 23rd, we sent a letter to the board on the, on the owner's behalf, asking you to change the classification to resource production. The current use and historical use is consistent with uses allowed under that designation. And so we ask that you consider a change from industrial to resource production. That specific use that's allowed in that land use classification is mineral resource production, which is, has been historical use on, on one of the 120-acre parcels of this property. The total property comprises a little over 900 acres, and the current owner would like to market it. There's not much market for industrial property. And again, the historical use and current use is consistent with the request to change to RP. The infrastructure that served that industrial area is falling in a state of decay. We recently had to repair the bridge over Calveritas Road because of just age. It's an old beautiful timber structure, and so that too is justification to maybe lower the potential intensity of use out there. The owners are prepared to work with the county staff on a compatible zoning, and we very much appreciate your consideration of a change from industrial to the resource production classification.
Thank you very much. Peter, if you could help keep track of each of these individuals. Little imperfect.
The one that you were talking about on Highway 12, that they want to change from commercial to industrial, isn't that where Toyon Middle School is also at? No? Well, then I don't have a problem with it.
Next speaker.
Good morning, Chair, fellow board members. My name is Diane Kinderman with the law firm of Abbott and Kinderman. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have some letters I'd like to pass out. May I approach and do some? Can I have an extra minute since this is cutting into my speaking time?
No.
So I represent the Brunker, yes. This, oh. Is that correct now? Oh, all righty. Thank you. So I'm here today speaking on behalf of the Brunker Land and Cattle Company and the Brunker family. And the property that we are interested in, its attachments are Exhibits 1 and 2 to the letter. It's a fairly short letter that you've got only four pages, and there are three attachments to it. So the location of the property is just in the southwestmost corner of the county, and it is to the west of Lake Tullock, which is why it's such an important property for future growth. It is currently designated single-family, future single-family residential, and it's proposed for the resource production designation, and we are requesting that that not be designated resource production. And alternatively, we came up with some others. If it could not stay in future single-family, we are requesting that it be designated either rural residential, future-specific plan, rural transition B. And there's three reasons that we're requesting the property not be designated rural resource production. So first is that it's the future single-family, or one of the other three, are truly the appropriate designations for this property from a sheer land use and standing, planning standpoint. There's already development adjacent to the property, the Copper Cove Project, Saddle Creek Project, Tuscany Hills Project, so there is a natural availability of necessary infrastructure, including water, sewer, and power. So it really is an appropriate area for future development in the, in the county, not to be maintained as resource production. The second reason for this is that this property's been in their family for 75 years. It's a very valuable business asset of this family. They have done future planning, family planning, around the ownership of this property and anticipation of future development. And this designation as resource production completely unravels this tapestry of family planning for the future on this property. And the third reason that we think this designation is not appropriate is that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kinderman.
I cannot finish?
No, ma'am.
All right, well, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appreciate it. If you have any questions, you know where to find us. We can answer those.
We have four minutes left. We'll get two more people. You guys can flip coins back there. And then we'll break to lunch, and we'll pick this up again after lunch. And we are keeping track of these requests, which we'll circle back on after our discussion. Sir?
Hello, Board. My name is Chester Murphy, and my family has a property we've owned in the Copperopolis area from, first, we purchased it in 1913. We have 27 parcels there. First of all, I just wanted to talk on the, just the woodlands, the harvest woodlands. My dad, my grandmother, they, you know, lived in Telegraph City, and they said there was a time when, as far as they could see, you wouldn't see a tree, because that, when the mines were going, they cut and harvested all the trees around there. So all that's come back within my dad's lifetime. So I just wanted to mention that. But anyway, our property is next to the Diamond 20. We've had the same zoning as the Diamond 20 has since it was built, so a little over 50 years. And because of that, we've had some infrastructure that's been put in there. When they realigned Highway 4, they took the area for intersection and overpass. They built the on-off ramp on one side of it there, but that was in the planning. It's not in the Williamson Act. The property has never been in the Williamson Act. And then there's fiber and conduit in the ground, couple thousand feet of it. We have five pool boxes. We got a will served from Calaveras Telephone about 10 years ago. They were going to put a water system into the Diamond 20. They were going to put a 12-inch and a 6-inch that was going to come into our property. And at that time, we got a serve. We were going to, it looked like that project was going to go at that time with, they were getting some money from Redevelopment Act, and that may come back around. And then there's four roads dubbed into from the Diamond 20 that would give a connection, another access out for emergency. And we have PG&E power on the property now. And, you know, the way it is now is we've had a rural residential zoning there for 50 years, and now the proposal is to make it resource production. So, you know, we're talking about clustering. There isn't anything to, you know, incentivize us. If that goes forward, we'll, you know, we have 27 lots there, and they'll continue to be there. But I ask the board to keep the five-acre residential zoning that we've had for the last 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. Last speaker, and then we will break for lunch. Sir?
Greg Meyer from Copperopolis, regarding Copperopolis, and again, the Copper Valley Ranch area. The planning commission out there, last general plan update meeting discussed revising the land use downgrade to resource production for the proposed Copper Valley Ranch area. I believe primarily because of the, some, I think inaccurate information from public comment that the EIR would be affected or invalidated, the designation was left unchanged. The land use designation for this property should be returned to a designation similar to single-family residential that exists now and existed when the Copper Valley Ranch project application for development was submitted in 2006. A rural transition designation or something similar would be reasonable. It is inappropriate to change the land use designation when an application for development has been submitted and delayed because of the general plan update process, in my opinion. It has been 13 years or more, which has created hardships for many, as you all know. The owner of the property have expressed their intent to move forward with, with development of this project with a more scaled-back, lower-density community buffering version. The Brunker Family Ranch, which owns a portion of the property, has a 79-year history of ownership. Copper Valley Partners purchased their portion of the property from Castle &amp; Cook with the intent to develop. Castle &amp; Cook has passed on years of work on this project that represent millions of dollars of investment. This gives added value to a property which, because of its unique characteristics, is already a valuable property. Waterfront property at Lake Tullock has the uniqueness of being one of the few areas where waterfront homes can be built on shoreline with improvements such as private boat docks. This area encompasses miles of developable shoreline that run from Tuscany Hills to Tullock Dam and on to Goodwin Dam. It has been targeted for development for many years because of the current land use designation and being adjacent to residential neighborhoods, water, sewer, and power, as you've already heard. Resource production land use designation identifies this land is primarily used for agricultural operations, as you know, such as grazing. My wife, son, and I have led in waterfront real estate sales at Lake Tullock for years, and I can verify that grazing land has a fraction of the value of waterfront property. The resource production designation with layers of punitive, in my opinion, mitigation would create a unfair situation for this property. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. With that, we stand at recessed until 1:30. Thank you.